Welcome to the meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee. I'll take it, councillor. Start by asking all of the apologies.
We have apologies from councillor Mackinson, who has TDC training, councillor Young, a family commitment, and councillor Driver, a family commitment.
Are there any others? No, good. Item two then is declarations of interest. Receive declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda. Anybody have any declarations? No. Item three then is the minutes. To approve the minutes of the order relating to the Finance and General Purposes Committee out on 21st of February 2024. Can I accept them as a true written?
Yes.
I'll propose that, Chair.
Seconded.
Seconded. Councillor Heatherton. Item four then is the caps. There are five items. To receive a note for financial comparison, income and expenditure through the 31st of March 2024. Let's see. All those in favour? Yes, okay. Item two is the financial statement cash book to the 31st of March 2024. Let me receive.
I'll see, Chair.
Item three is the annual return figures. A report on Advent Edge 2023-24. I should ask if there's any comments you would like to make.
No, there will be a comment against that, the next one. Item four, please.
Can we receive a note item three?
No, Chair.
Item four, summary of the budget, including the balance, the balance carried forward as of the 1st of April 2024.
Thank you, Chair. This was a report that I wrote primarily to assist the Deputy Town Clerk with data entry for the new financial year. But I thought it might be a helpful snapshot for the members as to where we are at the start of the financial year. Because there is the budget that you've approved, but also you won't have seen the balance carried forward. But of that balance carried forward, there's £233,000 of projects that are carried forward, so things that are approved to take place, but for one reason or another we couldn't complete last year. So we're making a note, making sure that that money is still available. And then there's a second note on, in addition to the budget, there was some additional decisions and environments made. An increase to town promotion new projects, an increase to the community services budget, ring fenced election expenses, everything listed under number two. And then what was left over was added into the capital projects and acquisitions. So I thought that was a useful snapshot to show that things haven't been forgotten about. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy with that, Chair?
Yes.
Propose exceptions?
Certainly. Is something wrong with my chair?
There is with mine as well, I missed this.
Oh, no, item five has no supplementary report. The question is...
What it is?
Oh!
Yes.
Item five concerns the committees, councillors' committees. Members are asked to consider how well the reduced membership of committees is working prior to council confirmant committee membership in the meeting on the 29th of March. You remember that when we need to do this, we said we'd review after six past here. So this is our chance to review it. Currently, there are nine members on the Finance and General Purposes Committee, seven members on the Town Promotion Committee, and seven members on the planning and infrastructure committee. Do we have any comments or proposals?
I find it's working brilliantly.
I think it's the downside, but, Chair, in the rest.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to put early dissenting voices. Yes, I mean, I do see for the purposes of... But I do miss going to the other meetings. And because I'm working, and because a lot of the other meetings are during the day, I can't attend them. So in a way, I prefer the old system, but I have to... I'm in the minority with this, so, you know.
I don't think it's during the day.
No.
Some of the last.
No.
No, I thought...
Active ramskating, so on, aren't they?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Not that...
Yeah, the word, but not the...
Yes, councillor Heatherton.
Oh, sorry. I would just say the working groups are subcommittees, not committees.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 it's just that... The main, the main committee is in the evening, but they are just working groups with only two or three councillors on them, so they're...
Okay, well, it is my...
I've always seen that you're missing.
Yes, that's the whole point. I feel I'm missing, okay, so... Missing out or not?
Maybe it's broken and unwanted.
Yeah, because we see, you know, we were going through things that I quite liked.
There's a stop you coming along to things.
There is quite a lot stopping coming along, work's stopping you coming along.
I'm thinking about the earlier afternoon, yes.
Yeah.
But I think it's, yes, it's...
Yeah, because I think town promotion is the only one that has got working groups.
But that's town purposes.
Well, that's daytime as well, isn't it?
It's six o'clock. These are the two that, you know.
You put it at six o'clock in the hope that people that are working can sneak in more easily. It does make the meetings very short and very...
Yeah.
Panics, but you get done before.
But you share very well.
I do share very stockily.
If I can just add to what you said is that the only challenge with the working groups being in the evening is that they are staff time. Because they are 50% roughly councillors and 50% staff. So if we do move those into an evening, then we're moving staff commitment into the evening as well.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm in the minority and I appreciate that. I'm just saying how I feel about it, which I think, you know, we're after, we felt about it, so...
Can I have a proposal?
I'll propose that we stay as we are, Chair.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded, councillor Heatherton. All those in favour?
Sorry, Chair. I don't think we have to say partly.
The next item, item six, is the lots. To consider and deduct the proposed allotment rule.
I wanted to ask a question.
Can you finish it?
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to say something first?
If I could give an introduction. So every allotment tenant has a contract, but the contract cannot be amended easily. We need to give a year's notice of amendment to a contract. So the contract has the fundamental, the basic rules in allotment law. And then the idea, and then the contract references a handbook. And this is our own site-specific rules that we can amend and update as required. My colleague allotment officer is present, who can answer questions as to why specific rules have come about and why they've been recommended. These rules have been written in conjunction with the allotment site reps, who are very happy with them, as these will help them, as well as officers.
Is this good to do?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the ponds. Because it says that ponds are permitted for environmental reasons, and quite easily it must be decided is reasonable in relation to the overall size of the plot. It says new ponds created due to old baths are potentially hazardous. Are there any other things that are potentially hazardous, like butler sinks and things that people can't use to create ponds? Or is it just baths? And I, and I just wondering, because that kind of like undermines the whole concept of recycling and stuff like that. I just wondered why that was so specific.
Would you like to come up, please, maybe?
Well, the use of glass was actually done in 2021 because there was an issue with old sanitaryware being taken onto allotment sites. And when a tenant left, they left their old stuff, you know, ended up being habitations that were having to collect their items and then came to, or had a round six tank, got it, to dispose, had it removed. So I see the issue with baths proposed from some of the allotment sites being treated as if they were ideal waste disposal areas for people that had work done at home, particularly want to take their items or pay to have them disposed. So, you know, of themselves, they're not an issue, but when that tenant leaves, they leave their old items, it can have an issue. And also, the separate issue with things like baths and butler sinks is they can't have a shower end. So any wild work that falls in can't easily escape. Whereas if you dig a pond, you can have a shower end. It's a lot harder to do it, especially with the thing because of the butler sinks.
So can I just come back? So are there any other kind of, rather than just old baths, shouldn't it be no sanitaryware or something like that? Because I've just mentioned the butler sink, which of course has got even... I mean, the bath has got one slope and end, but a butler sink is straight square. So, you know, I just wonder why it's specific just to baths and, yeah.
Okay, to respond. Some of this has been done, it's been an amalgamation of work that I've picked up from the previous allotment officer. And actually, your point is perfect. And it should be changed to reflect that, so any old sanitaryware would never sense. It's a mission on my part that I've just stuck with the word baths.
I can see why you think baths, because people use baths, but, you know, baths sinks, they all...
Councillor Heatherton, do you want to propose that as an amendment?
Yeah, I think so, please.
I'll come in, Chair. I've got five. Butler sinks, butler sinks, so there isn't any, there isn't a problem for anything. Actually, whether it be a duck or whatever, I don't know, I've ran him out of songs about the problem of baths.
But we've just heard that there's no shallow end in a bath.
I'm just, I'm not talking about a bath, I'm talking about you, what you're talking about.
So it's the same problem with the butler sink?
No. I know.
Good.
Anyway, I don't want to get into...
I thought butler sink was...
The member has to change the word into sanitaryware? Is that seconded?
If that's enough, because would that include the butler sink if you say sanitaryware?
No, it's okay, everything. Basically.
I mean, is that the best word?
How can you be specific and say sanitaryware, and in brackets, by example?
Yes, but... I think that might, might be better. I think that might be better, EG, baths, sinks. And then you leave the, the rest of it as EGs, so you can then cover toilets and everything else. I just have visions of people plunging toilets into their allotment.
That's a delightful idea. I wanted to ask one question, which is obviously by the nature of this being a sort of, as it were, a historic document that's been updated and whatever, it's got a lot of very sort of archaic language in and so on. And I'm wondering how we make sure that our tenants do understand what it is that they're taking on? Because it's long and it's quite complicated and so... And I just wondered about the process that they go through when they're, you know, when they're first offered a plot and how that, how that works to make sure that we know and they know that they understand everything.
Let's deal with the amendment process.
Okay.
Councillor Heatherton.
Do I have any seconders?
Oh, yes, Ben, happy to second you.
What does it mean? Next. The archaic language is a difficult one.
Yes, I'm just wondering...
The only thing we could do is refer back.
Do you think we have signs up, for example, with some of the basics on the notice board, et cetera? It's that kind of thing I wanted to know really, and how we...
Councillor Alvin.
I've seen nothing wrong with archaic language, we shouldn't use our archaic language. And, and I'm quite, I'm quite sure, having read it myself, I'm quite sure that the, that everybody who looks at the... Whether they actually look at their, the agreement is, is another matter. As long as they get their allotment, they'll be very, very happy and would be happy to go along with anything that's within this. I don't see any of this as a problem at all. I'm more than happy to fully support it. And I think it's great and...
Can we...
Sorry, Maggie, it's been right.
Just to answer your question, when somebody takes an allotment, I give a copy of their signed, and it's a agreement.
Yeah.
I give them a copy of the rules and I do...
Talk them through it. Hoping you would say, but I just wanted to check.
I also give them something, a guide that suggests what they should be doing.
Do me a tea.
And I do say to everybody that, you know, if they're not sure, call me now. But my understanding from site reps is that they're not going to reason. I suppose not.
Surprise, surprise.
In the most indispensable at the allotment site, the site reps have them nominated and they are there. So they have a personal copy.
Yes.
They have a copy. So, yes, that's where... And also, it wasn't in any way a criticism of the language, it was about the accessibility of it.
Because councillor Alvin is used to reading long documents, it is very stressful.
And a lot of people are, and it could be a little bit of a... They haven't had that level of support.
Thank you for reassuring me on that.
I genuinely appreciate you thinking about it, because when you get bogged down in a document, you know what's coming next, so I definitely just really thank you.
But that's still using piles and patches, I think.
Quite.
I have another question. It's, I think it's 520, but it's the one before, yeah, I think it's 570 or top of 513. It says about... Okay, I'm not quite sure. This is not the yellow bits, this is the...
520, yeah.
I think it's 614, but it's actually not on there. It's, because it's the thousand, it's half an item above 615. 613.
One of these, yeah, councillor.
And it's got, however, it says with a lot of stroke vegetation waste or stuff. However, weed piles are not permitted. This waste must be bagged and disposed of, you go up and waste receptacles. And I just wondered if weed composters were allowed as opposed to weed piles? If someone's got one of these composters, we turn a hand and it turns over and it mixes it all up?
It's that.
And it's not just weeds going in it, but food and everything else, is that allowed?
Weed, any form of receptacle is allowed. It's the practice of just hardening things up, getting things blowing.
That's what I wanted to check, because the seeds spread, but if they're in a...
Any compost kind of thing, fine, thank you.
It's just spotted at the top, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to...
Any questions?
Are we ready to accept?
Yes.
Thank you.
Indeed.
Proposal?
Yeah, proposal, Chair.
Good for you. All those in favour? Thank you.
Can I just say something, Chair? Can I just thank Maggie?
Yes.
She's come in and hit the ground running. She's, she's got, she's got the grits with this. And recently, we've been doing a little few emails to each other. Just in relation to plots that are not apt to grace. So, yeah, I think, I think she's done a fair job.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you.
It's always the most difficult, isn't it, Chair?
Yes.
Oh, I'll just go, I can't give it.
Item seven, outside.
Have we done item six?
I know, item six, to consider a report from the town office regarding tenants who are not residents of Ramsgate. Would you like to say something?
I'll try to.
What do you need?
Do you want me to get... Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a proposal that could free up allotment plots for residents of Ramsgate. And it's whether it's something that it's perfectly appropriate to do, and it's where the members would like to go down this, to progress this by actually giving notice to some historic tenants who are not residents of Ramsgate.
Remember, because they were residents.
Actually, I believe these are a historic group who, when we took on the sites from TDC, were already outside of Ramsgate, but we permitted them to stay at the time. And whether now, 10 years later, actually would like to have these plots, which could then be broken up into quarters for, to make plots available for the extensive waiting list.
Councillor Alvin.
Yeah, if I may ask Maggie a question. Maggie, with these, with these ex-residents of Ramsgate, are they allowed to pass that on to family members? So if they decided to stop, which is before we made a decision how it is now. So if Mr and Mrs Smith don't want to do it anymore, are they allowed to give it to the son or daughter or whatever to carry on?
Technically, yes, they would, yeah, would do that.
Then if I'm coming in there, Chair, I, I don't think it would be the right thing, in my, in my opinion, to terminate. They've been there historically and it's not their fault, it's gone to Ramsgate Town Council. So, but the one thing I would do is that when the current tenant holder doesn't want it anymore, that family can't take, take over the plot. Because that's then, we should get that into, so we'll get Ramsgate residents being able to, to use it. And also, do we know how many are there of these that there are? I can't remember what you just said, Laura.
It's got it on. There was a break down here, there is some...
How many?
16 plots.
16 plots, and are they whole plots?
Yes.
Are whole?
It's, well, it's got over half, over 21 half plots, so that's...
They have multiple plots of legacy agreements.
Yeah, yes, which is a worry. Can I...
Yes, so a proposal, councillor.
I, I was going to listen to what everybody else got to say, but I will put that forward as a proposal, Chair.
I just wanted to note what is said at the top of, of the second page is that the Artisie allotment plots are subsidised by the pre-set contributions of the residents within the Ramsgate parish boundary. So if there are people who are benefiting from that subsidy that don't live within the parish boundary, then obviously that might be something that those who do live within the parish boundary might not be too happy about. And I was just wondering whether or not, given, I'm thinking of the Chiltern area, how close that is to the parish boundary. I imagine that that's one of the areas where, you know, the closer we get to a parish boundary, the more likely we are to have upholders who are not within the parish boundary, because it's their nearest allotment. So I don't know whether or not there's any scope for, for dealing with that as an issue.
Councillor Heatherton.
What do you mean, sort of speculative? But how could we monitor people handing on their plots within the family?
Well, a bit change of, I think, colour.
Just have to change the paper.
Is that that flower?
It seems to happen. People seem to change their plots quite a bit. Allotments without, it seeming to go, I mean, I'm sort of aware of a few people that...
I mean, if it's a different person paying, I guess that could be...
How can we monitor, can that be monitored more effectively?
My understanding is sometimes site reps will allow plot holders to move on a site because perhaps there's an elderly person who's at a distant plot, and they'll move that person, so that doesn't come through me. It's done by agreement with, with two plot holders on a site. But any plot holder that has a helper for more than 10 years, that helper does have the right to take, other current system does have the right to take that plot when the original tenant relinquishes it. And there isn't anything written at the moment regarding the so-called legacy tenants not being able to pass it to somebody else who doesn't live in our parish boundary area. But there, there's a two-pronged issue here. I have two people who have recently moved out of our area. So it's my list of the legacy tenants, so I've got two different issues here that I need your direction on.
When you say they've moved in, oh, sorry.
Something you can share?
I must say, when I first came to this topic, I was inclined to feel the same way as, as you, councillor Alvin, that, that we shouldn't be ejecting people just because they've had the misfortune to have had their plots taken over by Ramsgate Town Council. But then, then when I looked at the figures and the number of people we've got on the waiting list and the length of notice period that we're proposing to give people if we go down that route, it felt to me like it was the least worst option, if you will, to look at giving that long notice period to people and explaining that we have a big, long waiting list. It's people who are contributing to the pre-set. I'm afraid you don't live in, within the parish boundary, you don't contribute to the pre-set. Therefore, I would suggest that we go along that route. That would be my preference, having read all the information.
Councillor Heatherton and then councillor Alvin.
I was going, I've got two things. First one was a quick question. The people that have recently moved out of the area, have they just like nipped over the boundary or are they way off, like moved to Canterbury or something?
No, it is within that.
So it's like nipped over the boundary, right. And the other thing that I'm picking up on what councillor Austin has just said is, what I was looking at just now, is I'm wondering, you know, these allotment plots are subsidised by the pre-set contributions. Could we have a two-tier pricing for the existing? So that in fact, we're only subsidising those that live within the boundary. And those who live outside of the parish boundary are not paying through our pre-set would be subject to a higher charge on that basis. And that obviously would include the legacy tenants, but it would be people who live outside the boundary. I'm, I'm mixed about it, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out as a, as a thought to see what others think.
Councillor Alvin.
Well, let's just keep it simple, shall we? Let's not complicate matters. The fact, the facts are that these allotments should only be going to Ramsgate residents. If someone moves out of the area, then they should be told that they no longer have a plot on the site. My concern, as we cooked it with councillor Austin, is in relation to the historic transfer from TDC to RTC. What I would, what I would amend my own motion, Chair. And that would be and and that would be to give notice to the um long-term tenants and uh are outside the area or or whatever. Um, to say over, your your contract will be terminated in the next two two years. So instead of just going, okay, you stay there until you pop pop off, let's give them a let's give them a date to go and and I think that that I I after listening to what Council Austin said, I think that would kind of makes a little bit more sense. And it's straightforward, bonk. Councilor.
I agree with Councilwoman, I think more than a year at the end of the growing season, I think the legacy uh tenants is therefore, I think two years would be a much fairer option. And also, we've got to bear in mind, we've got newer properties within our boundaries that are flats. Um, they don't have access to open spaces, so our our list is gonna grow, the waiting list.
Yes, if we didn't have a large waiting list, it wouldn't matter so much.
No, yeah, I think that's the pressure, yeah.
Turn around.
Thank you. Uh, the our contracts renew in November, October, that's October. Um, so would this be two years be to this October and then to the next October? So it's probably about eighty.
Over twenty-five.
Yeah. That's what I was gonna suggest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, we have a motion.
So October, uh, the thirtieth of September twenty twenty-five.
Seconded, Councilor Hudson.
Yeah.
Do you want to comment, sorry?
Can I just ask if if um the committee can make a ruling regarding the recently moved tenant plot?
Include that, you.
Yeah, if they're moving, Chair, if I may, if they're if they're moving out of Ramsgate, then then they give, we give them two years and others.
Well, so they give them until September twenty-fourth.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Plus to the end of the.
Well, yeah, same as we just agreed. It's because in two years. Yeah. Yeah. So they won't all be doing it as it comes, yeah.
Yeah, is that all right?
You all right with that, Maggie?
It's 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 his decision.
Yeah, as long as they notified, they're notified that when they leave the area, you've got.
Until the end of their.
The end of their, I think, yeah.
Second, second year, right.
All those in favour? Thank you again. So I'm not saying how wonderful you are second time around.
Don't expect, don't expect.
That's um is the exciting title of investment options. Receive a report from the town clerk regarding investment opportunity.
Uh, currently, the council does not receive any interest on on its funds. Uh, a a year, a year and a half ago, I hadn't expected us to expected us to still have these funds, so I hadn't considered um I I I thought our projects would have progressed by now and we wouldn't still have them. But uh we we do have a a considerable sum of money. And I've looked at different opportunities for gaining a uh a sum of interest. The budget has an expectation that four thousand eight hundred pounds will be achieved in the current financial year. And all of the options that I've given you quite exceed that sum. Um, I should note that um the Financial Services Compensation Scheme does not extend to Ramsgate Town Council because we're we're too large. The placement of investment funds is delegated to myself, but I'm asked, I'm bringing this to you because actually the the figures involved to begin with are so significant. Uh, the uh the organisations that I've contacted, um it's primarily because they are very well known for parish council investments. Cambridge and County is actually the savings opportunity they've had at the moment, I don't think suitable, that's five years fixed rate with no withdrawals. I did point out to them that I can't see that being suitable for any town and parish council.
No.
They they usually have um a instant access or uh access within six months, but not at the moment. Unity Trust Bank, our current bank, uh, we could possibly look at a a combination of instant access and a six-month fixed term deposit account. Their instant access at two point seven percent doesn't have a great rate of interest, so maybe improve that by um having some funds also in a six-month fixed term deposit account. The CCLA, Churches, Charities and Local Authorities, uh Investment Management, they're public sector deposits. This is a real classic place for councils, churches, educational establishments to 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 put their money.
Yeah.
Um, and they are very much geared to um uh working ethically and.
Can I just interrupt for, I haven't got page two in the printed set and I don't think um Council Hudson has either, so so I'm just. Yeah, so just say I I haven't got. Don't read this.
After yours here.
With my eye patches.
And then uh some of our um counterparts have started to use something called Insignis Cash Platform, uh which is an FCA-regulated platform where it it gives you access to different bank accounts. Um, apparently, it's quite honourous to set up, but it's quite easy to use once you once you get going. My concern there is how much you need to be shopping around and looking um at the best rate in different places. And also, the the banks and building societies weren't ones that were known to me, it was a I I'm not saying that NatWest, Lloyds, Halifax aren't on there, but it uh that the ones I saw were, it was a list of names that I've I've never heard of before. So I think possibly the really the options are you uh that our current uh classic bank savings account with Unity Trust Bank or the CCLA.
Or a combination.
Or or a combination. And then you're also asked to think about the the level of investment. I've I've used one million as as an example. Uh, but actually theoretically, we probably need to have about three hundred thousand pounds in the account, which would allow us to put uh to to access and it could be topped up on a quarterly basis. We'd need to pay close attention to that to make sure that we do have cash in the right place at the right time. Um, but we could actually move a lot of money, a a a larger percentage of our money into into savings. But actually, all the options here more than cover the the four thousand eight hundred that we were planned to get.
I have I have a proposal to make to help the data line, that's we put five hundred thousand in it as the Unity Trust um uh project that we're already using. Uh, five hundred thousand in the instant instant access account and five hundred in the other account. Councilor.
Yeah, sorry, I I was going to ask um Laura, the first thing is, I I for me, I want simplicity for you. And so what is the easiest bank for you to deal with? Now, I I deal with Unity Trust and it's a nightmare, it's a living nightmare. Um, that's okay, that's okay. Um, and so I I know it can be okay, you might have a different experience as town council with it, so um so my first thought would be, what's the easiest for you? My second thought is that rather than three hundred left in um the uh our own account, I would prefer to see slightly more, five hundred thousand. I think that takes away a little of the pressure of having to keep on monitoring it um and having to go, oh, you know, I've just got to move that much that much over. So that would be my, that was my suggestion, I I think um Council Green might be leaving a bit more in there than I was, but I I was certainly thinking to increase that to to that. Um, but I'm quite happy with the suggestion about splitting it between two, um but those are my thoughts.
Uh, in terms of simplicity, I'm I'm not too sure how you will will want to deal with Unity Trust. Um, you have to have a uh a high street bank that you access your unitary uh uni Unity Trust account through, and at the moment, we use NatWest. And that and obviously NatWest in town is closing. And they, uh Eileen's looked at this and I'm not sure who else we have in town that we can, that is tied to Unity. It it it's becoming more difficult to to access Unity.
I I my I I use Unity and I do it a hundred percent online, yes.
Uh, but when we have cash to deposit in a bank account, we're currently looking to see whether we can get access the NatWest Night Safe at Margate.
I didn't think.
Councilor. Thank you, Chair, yeah, I uh I'm in favour of this, of doing doing this, I think it's the right thing to do. And if we get it, get some interest on the money that that we have, it's got to be the good thing for our residents as as well, because depending on how much it is.
It depends on with it.
The pre-set, et cetera. Um, I I I I don't know too much about banks, except where I've got my ten bob sitting. Uh, and um the only thing I I I was gonna s- suggest um would be, obviously, standing this at council for its section one five five one officer, um invest, obviously, in money that that they got, as to whether uh they might be able to give you some guidance as to as to uh where their money is and um and other sources. Um, so that's, not trying to stall anything, but just to see if they give you any further information, they might only give you what you've got, but I just thought it was a it was a dot and an iron crossing a T re- really. But in all in all, I'm quite happy to go with Council Green's motion. Councilor Austin.
I I'm more inclined to go with um what Council Crittendon suggested, putting a a little more into the um into the uh accessible money so that staff don't have to be worrying about it. I don't see a um conflict between that and uh ha- going with your suggestion in view of how much money we have uh at the moment sitting there. Um, so putting uh five hundred into the instant access and five hundred into the six-month fixed term seems to me sensible. I have used the CCLA myself when I worked in a charity. Um, and it was straightforward to use, et cetera, but I do think the fact that it the the value of it can fluctuate because it depends on the markets, probably is a complication we don't really need, so I'd be inclined to go with the the bulk of it in the the two different sorts of deposit accounts in the Unity Trust.
Councilor, sorry, town clerk.
Thank you, Chair, may I say that if there was one million to go into um uh Unity Savings across two accounts, that does leave uh start of the year, one point eight million still in the general account.
We don't want that, no, no. Seven hundred and fifty thousand in each? Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
The defence is my proposal, it was for simplicity.
Yeah.
We're already union that bank. Always.
Yes, absolutely.
We can always.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand in each. Can I propose that?
The issue is over not having a high street bank to make deposits into, I think is a separate issue.
Yes, yeah.
And if we have to change, we'll change. So I'm happy to accept that amendment, seven hundred and fifty in each. Okay.
Um, are we going um split between Unity and CCLA at the moment or C's or?
The two, the two.
Sorry, the the two.
Instant access one, the that you have to give.
Six six months, no. If we are gonna have to change, wouldn't, I'd I'd have been inclined to split between Unity and CCLA.
Oh, you have to, oh, against five hundred pounds. Yeah, simplicity is best, yeah, as well.
Hmm, but if you're gonna have to close the Unity and move it all somewhere else.
We might not want that, the one that you're suggesting. Sorry, Chair.
Sorry.
Councilor.
If we have to close the Unity, it would be for our everyday banking, it would necessarily affect where we've got money on deposit, because that would be dealt with online anyway.
Definitely.
Sorry, I think for for simplicity in setting up, going with our current bank, Unity will be most straightforward, we already know us. Sorry, I'm going muddy the waters by saying, I don't know, I think long term, I'm not sure how much longer we'll be with Unity, but I think just for setting up new accounts now, we'd that's you would you would hope would be more straightforward with our current bank.
And it doesn't commit, excuse me, sorry, um doesn't commit it in the long term anyway, does it? That the instant access one, we can always move to another bank or another investment option if that proves appropriate.
Councilor.
Sorry, can I just ask another question? If it if it is going to be split between the two Unity accounts, one is a six-month fixed term, no access for six months. And if that's half of the the investment, seven hundred and fifty thousand, then how do we feel about that? Is that, how does that work for us as a council? And what are the risks that that are associated with not being able to get our hands on that money for six months if we need to?
Well, it's interesting. I think the the consideration is how quickly could, are we likely to uh be required uh need money for Radford House? That is where it's expected that the the big expenditure is. And you know, can I, I'll go and do do some thinking about it, but um I can't picture that we're going to be be requiring access to that funds within six months. I think if if we got the money in there quickly.
Well, interesting.
Uh, so it would go into those accounts.
Okay. Is there a second definitely? No, seconded, yeah. Councilwoman. Who is in favour? Thank you, let's carry on. Let's have a look at this financial regulation. Note the newly issued National Association of Local Council Financial Regulations two thousand and twenty-four. These have not yet been tailored for Ramsgate Town Council. Once done, this document will go to the council for approval. Town clerk.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so uh as as we've just approved our financial regulations for the year, a uh new model uh document is being issued by the National Association of Local Councils, and this is actually the largest revision of of the financial regulations that I've I've seen before. I'm not quite sure whether I'll have the I've been able to go through this and consider how how we need to amend our practices to to fit in with these guidelines, but there there's updates in procurement, tendering, electronic government, risk management, audit requirements, financial planning, budget management, uh staff requirements. And it may well be that when I I give this some detailed thought, I'll be pleasantly surprised and think I finally do all of this. Or whether there's going to be quite a a revision in actually in our practices. So, but at at this stage, it was just. So, but at this stage, it was just to let you know that this is on the cards and on my radar.
Thank you. Thanks.
Love you.
So, yeah, the proposal to note this.
I've proposed, Chair.
That's carried.
Thank you.
The first item, item nine, Parliament Change Task Group. To receive and note the minutes of the Parliament Change Task Group meeting on the twenty eighth of February two thousand and four. And to consider and approve the amended terms of reference for the Parliament Change Task Group, as drafted by councillor Austin, going for the chair. And Mr Williams, proper officer for the group, covering reports. Did you?
I did not, Chair.
Just wanted to apologize because I did actually suggest that I will try to produce an updated report when we missed the previous meeting because we have the parking presentation. I'm afraid we've been too busy doing the stuff to actually write the report about it, so I apologize.
That's a good excuse. I'd just like to say, I think this group has been really successful.
I absolutely agree.
Indeed.
We're loving it. It's really good to be able to do some practically useful things that residents appreciate.
With councillor Austin and Dean, we congratulate them.
Dean has been an absolute treasure and I'm immensely grateful for it.
I was just wanting to, I just wanted to give my personal thanks to councillor Austin for the work that she's, the work that she's done and along with Dean and everybody else taking part, like yourself. I think they've moved it on tremendously and I'm very grateful and I think the council should be grateful for that.
Thank you. Thank you. I've really enjoyed it.
We approve the terms of reference.
And the terms of reference.
Did we approve the terms, the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Indeed.
Let's carry on. So then we note as a term then, the real boundary review. Except to say that the Boundary Commission has already approved the number of district councillors in the future will be forty two instead of the current fifty six. And there are a lot of consequences that flow from that. Would you like to say something, Tapper?
No, but the, the specific question that the commission is asking of you is your views on which communities should be part of the same ward? What facilities do people share such as parks, leisure centres or schools and shopping areas? That's a suggestive question from the commissioner, commission. What issues do neighbouring communities face that they have in common? Have there been any new housing or commercial developments that have changed the focus of communities? Are there roads, rivers, railways or other features that people believe form strong boundaries between neighbourhoods? So this is where they're looking at where the, that the ward boundaries are.
Could I just come out on a couple of things? We don't have to come at all, we don't want to. And I wouldn't have thought we would have wanted to get down to the nitty gritty of you know, street by street.
I think with that, we need more information if we're going to go down them.
Let me just think. But I do think we might like to say something about the town, trying to preserve the town boundary enough that I forwards across the town.
Yes.
And the other thing I think probably is important to us, because a lot of our people shop there, is to retain a part of Westwood Cross in the Ramsgate boundary. Sorry, councillor Hudson.
Yeah, I just think in terms of, we need more facts and figures if we are going to discuss that in detail and give a viewpoint. You know, we've got, I've read through what we were saying and we've got figures and percentages. We do need to, if we're going to give this more consideration of where our boundaries are, if they are to change at all and if we're going to compress wards even, we need to look at a little bit more than just a few bare facts and figures. It's what amenities are in each area, each ward, if they do change.
This doesn't necessarily affect the terms.
Terms.
Councillor Austin.
No, just to say that we did have quite an extensive, we started a discussion the other night about this at the meeting. And I think that there are a lot of things we could do to make this easy for everyone. I mean, like, you know, sort of rough maps and stuff which would help. But yes, it needs a lot of consideration and thought.
Yeah. Just to say, I have filled in the online consultation as an individual member of the public. I found it very unhelpful as far as information is concerned and very unhelpful as far as the number of word limit was concerned. There's not an awful lot of space to write very much. Obviously, the expectation is that people will only write about their little street, presumably on that basis. But I didn't find a huge, I didn't find it brilliantly helpful. But I definitely agree with you that, you know, that the integrity of the boundaries between Ramsgate, Broadstairs and Margate, particularly when you get to that funny little jiggle and pokery bit up around Westwood Cross, I think is, we really do have to say. And what happens with Cliffs End and Pegwell, of course, is something else. But, you know, we already had that little bit over there. That's, thank you.
Thank you.
I was assuming that with the concentration of new population around the Westwood area, that we would end up with at least one Westwood Ward. Because at the moment, the Westwood area is divided very oddly. Well, it seems to me very oddly. So there's a bit of, there's a bit of, there's a bit, yeah, there's a bit of the Westwood residential area that sits in Manston, for example, as part of the Stanic Villages Ward. There's another bit that's part of Garland, which is, it's really rather busy and odd. And it feels to me like if we're going to ever get any kind of sense of community in all that area, we're going to have to put people together in one or more wards. I had assumed that would be one of the things, one of the changes that would inevitably happen. Maybe I'm wrong. I, I don't, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. My personal feeling is how the wards are mainly in Ramsgate will stay the same. I can't really see, see you, Laurie. I can't really see those changing. And it is, as councillor Green said, Pegwell and Cliffs End, that there might be a change there, who it would go with, whether it would go in Villages, whatever. And Westwood Cross is obviously about, and I honestly think there will be a Westwood Cross Ward.
A Westwood Ward or more.
Yeah, yeah, I think that. But where, you know, I think there needs to be a whole Westwood Cross Ward. But whether or not there will be a small part tucked away in Ramsgate and one tucked away in Broadstairs as it currently is, who knows? But I think it depends on the amount of houses, it depends on the amount of residents, because it's all done on residents numbers. So that would be interesting that once we get, kind of get those projected figures.
Projected figures.
It's projected, so, you know, four years down the line. So that's got to be taken into account. But I don't really think, Chair, that it will affect us that much in relation to the main part of Ramsgate or something, I don't think it will. And I'm quite happy not to say anything.
Well, it will in the sense that if we move to two number ones.
Ah, yeah, but that would be in relation to, I think currently, again, purely my own view is that some of us, the three of us here are in three member wards. And I think whilst it would be more work for two, but I really don't think that the boundaries will change. I know, it's just my.
I think they will change because we've probably got to lose two wards.
Because we've got to lose some wards.
I've driven back.
Lose.
Lose, but you have to drop down from seven to about five in Ramsgate in order to make the numbers of the whole planet. But what I wanted to say was actually, I would rather than have a Westwood Cross Ward, which is going to be predominantly Margate and Manston with a little squidge of Broadstairs and Ramsgate, I would actually retain the integrity of the boundaries for electoral purposes and for representation. Because the reality is that the people who live there are probably not aware of what ward they live in, except when they get their ballot paper. And so the community, the sense of community, if that's built up, even if there are, you know, two dozen houses in another town, they're still going to be a part of that Westwood community. The only difference will be once every, however many years it is, when it comes to elections and they're voting for someone slightly different according to the drawn boundary. But I do think that I would, I would retain the integrity of the Ramsgate, Broadstairs, Margate town boundaries around there. And I must admit, I have lost track of where the boundary goes now because it's horribly messy in there. And we would need a very, very ordnance survey level to understand where, you know, houses are, clumped around those boundaries.
It affects our precinct. Where those houses are affects our precinct.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, does anybody want to make a protest?
Well, I've, both, we, at present, we don't make any comment in, as a town council unless anybody else has got a view of doing that. Until things become more clearer.
Review it regularly.
Question. When is the closing date for the consultation?
Twenty seventh of May.
No, well, we will not. So it's either no comment or no comment.
Well, yeah, because we have not got enough information, as been said, no.
Haven't got time.
So is that just on the forty two instead of fifty six, councillor?
So the way it reads is that forty two members instead of fifty six has already been approved.
Yes.
Approved, yeah.
And so I think now the consultation is on the ward boundaries.
And then they'll look at how spread the members across those boundaries.
Councillor Crittenden.
Just would like, I appreciate that councillor Albin has already proposed we make no comment. But if, I would prefer to make a comment. So if his motion falls, then I'd like to suggest that our only response is to remain the integrity of the parish boundary. Whatever the ward boundaries are, that we retain the integrity of the parish boundary.
Well, I think that's.
We just have district wards that cross.
That's a given, isn't it?
Yeah, but I think that's a comment. If we are going to do any feedback, that's the only feedback I would do.
Yeah. And it isn't.
And I think we need to say it.
Yeah.
I would certainly support that.
Yep.
But we don't have district wards that cross.
Yep.
I can't care to be cautious. So, yeah, I'll go with that. I would draw my motion. That makes things easier. Just to let councillor Crittenden have her way.
Do that response. Would we then be, would we then be supporting about Pegwell and Cliffs End, where there's a district boundary that crosses two parishes?
Well, that's why I said the town boundaries. Town boundaries. We could incorporate that or split it. Yes.
I mean, because of that, we would be happy to accept Pegwell.
Pegwell.
As part of Ramsgate.
In, yeah, Pegwell and Nethercourt Ward, in Nethercourt Ward, whatever.
Central was the biggest already.
I think the bigger problem is up around Westwood.
And Newington.
I think the rest of the boundaries are probably further forward.
You know, the issue about the housing that's been developed all along the other side of that.
Yes.
If that goes into the villages, it's going to dominate the villages.
Yep.
Electoral, which depends on what we'd like.
And it's, the villages is a difficult ward anyway, particularly if it's, I'm going to have two councils.
You have to get down into the numbers and that's pretty difficult.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm happy with what we're now saying.
Yep, great.
All those in favour? That ends the public part of the meeting. We now have a confidential part. We have to speed this up then.
I think not in full, but if you could ask members to vote to exclude the press in public for reasons of, at least to be discussed.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah.
All in favour?